Yeah, we've got microphones. So it can pick up everything you're saying, so if you don't want it to push, you've got to push this button. So it doesn't, so it won't pick up. Yeah, move that one closer to Neil, too. Because the person that was doing our minutes, it was really hard for them to hear people, so. They could get paper rustling, but they couldn't get voices.
We got quite enough. That's good enough for me.
Okay.
Ready?
Yeah, we are ready.
All right. Time being at or about 7:00. Call the July 7, 2009, meeting of the town of Plymouth zoning board of adjustment to Members present tonight, we have Neil MacGyver, Dick Piper, Bill Clark, I'm Dick Lewis, and Howard Burnham is an alternate who will be seated this evening. First order of business is the adoption of the June 2nd minutes. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, deletions?
I was not here, so.
Me either. I make a motion to accept the Mr. Presentant.
Is there a second?
Neil, were you here?
Pardon?
Were you here?
What, last week?
Yeah, last minute.
Last month? Yes.
Yeah. You want to make a second for those minutes?
Sure.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the June 2, 2009 minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Approved. Just one quick administrative, save the date, advertising that was on the table in front of everybody for a local government center, their fall conference, November 18 through the 20th, 2009, at the Radisson in Manchester. So I think if people could see you about signing up for that.
Right, just let me know and we'll sign you guys up, so you don't have to pay anything. And if there's a bunch of people, we can carpool, too. But I gave everyone a copy at their place.
All right. First order of business is case 111114ZBA070709-1. This is a public hearing on, well, I guess as noted on the amended agenda, public hearing on modifying a previously granted use variance. Just kind of for the record, a couple things. I think as Miriam noted in her revised staff report, a December 1989 decision granting a use variance for a tourist home that was approved by the board back then is still in effect. Variance is run with land, so that approval is still in effect. One of the discussion points tonight would be more administrative in nature, being possible modification of some of the conditions of that 1989 approval. I guess just the other thing I would just say administratively for the record is that while I am not a direct abutter, I do live just down the street on Keeble Street, if this had been a full hearing, I would have recused myself, just because of neighborhood issues. But unless the board feels otherwise, given the administrative nature of the discussion this evening, and just for the modification of a previously approved decision, I have no problem in dealing with it administratively. But if the board feels otherwise, I would step down. Anybody have any concerns with that? Okay.
Not at all.
All right. You're Mr. Hinkle.
Yes.
Want to make a short presentation and just kind of enlighten, kind of bring everybody up to speed as to where we are?
I'll make it very quick. My name is Frank Hinkle. My wife is Jane. She can't be here. She's down in Florida right now. But what we do propose is to put a bed and breakfast in there and get the variance for the, which we already, I guess we already have, for the tourist home. I just wanted to show you kind of what our, I went through a whole justification of the variance. I'm not going to bore you with that. The questions that were on the application, I was trying to answer again. Some of the points that I would make is that we will remain on-site and we maintain our residents on-site, and that we are planning extensive improvements to the property, mostly on the inside, but a little bit on the outside, and we'll get to that real quick at the end. My wife made me put all these photos in here. This is her Victorian Rose Room. When we moved in, it was, everybody tried to make it modern. That lived in it before, it's not modern anymore as far as the look is concerned. We've received an awful lot of support from Plymouth State and a couple of businesses in the town of Plymouth. I think our goal is to improve the assets, the business assets of the town. We'd like to provide some unique accommodations for any visitors to the area. The area is absolutely gorgeous. We fell in love with it, and we want to kind of share it with everybody else. This is a little bit of the Rose Room. That used to be just a plain old window. Now it's a window seat. Some of this looks like it's ridiculous to go through. That's, you don't need to worry about that one. Don't need to worry about that one either anymore. This is across the street. Does anybody know whether that's the Draper or the Maynard House?
That's the Draper House.
Okay, I got them wrong. Because the Maynard House is next door.
Well, it's gone now.
The house, I believe that the Stope House.
Well, is that house still there? Yeah, it is still there.
At Four Pleasant. Was the Maynard House then?
It's right behind Boyd Hall.
Right.
I thought they tore it down.
There was a house that was in that parking lot.
In between, in between.
Right.
That was just a.
So we've got some.
That's the house just below you. I apologize for interrupting.
They made an entrance, they tore that house down and made an entrance. The Maynard House is that big one sitting up on the rock.
So we've got some historical buildings in that, in that area. I've got, you've got the Maynard House, the Draper House. Ours was originally built by the Nuttings. Go through this. Do you guys really want to see all of this stuff? I want to get to, all right, the points that I'm going to make about the bed and breakfast. It's going to be consistent with the neighborhood. It's going to be non-polluting. It's not going to increase any of the town services. And there's not going to be any change other than maybe color to the physical characteristics of the house. And we propose increasing the business tax base and increasing accommodations assets for the town. This is the front parlor on the left and the dining room on the right. History. It was originally built by Edwin and Anna Nutting around 1889. Edwin was from the Plymouth Ashland area, Anna was from Boston. Edwin and his brother ran a blacksmith shop in Hartwood store, from what I understand, two places, one in Ashland and one in Plymouth. And, see, I did make a mistake. The Maynard Home is next door. The Draper House is across the street. The last major altercations were in the 1920s when they put the fireplace in. And there was a second floor bedroom in the back added, too. Other than that, everything is original. You can't see it too well, but Miriam can verify this one.
Yeah.
She was by the house. If you look on the left, is the porch rails. It looks like somebody sanded all the detail off the porch rails and banisters. I found out that was just filled in with milk paint. And I've been about a month and a half now scraping paint off of the porch. We're going to, we're going to try to bring it back to what it was originally. The exterior colors, through my research, I've found butter yellow, burgundy, and green, forest green. And we're going to bring it back to all of that, all of those colors. Everything else in it is, the utilities are modern. It's got a modern oil furnace. It's very efficient, and we're going to try to upgrade it to 200 amp. If you look at this fireplace, it's one of the ugliest fireplaces I've ever seen on the left. The one on the right is what it looks like now. This, I know, is one of the points that we're going to take a look at. The proposed driveway and parking. Originally, the variance was granted with rear parking. I don't like that. There's not really enough room to do that. We're going to do a driveway, a quarter round circle driveway going into the existing and expand it to 20 feet so that it, you can accommodate cars along the side and still drive through.
Can I ask a question while you're on the slide? Fence, the, there's a chain link fence on the, on this university side of the wood fence there. There's a little bit of a kickback on that wood fence. Is that going to stay, or is that?
Oh, everything's staying on the, if you look at the notch on this, where I have the house.
Yeah.
That's the tower of the house, and it actually extends farther. So the driveway is not even going to go outside the boundaries of the house. I just had GMI out today to measure it out, and I've got a proposal from GMI to do exactly this. And it's probably the simplest thing. Our original plan with GMI was, when he sent it back to me, the diagram, we were going to turn the front lawn into a parking lot, and I said, "No. I don't even want parking in front of the house." I would have liked it off to the side, but we can't avoid it. We did obtain a permit to do this basic design last year from the town. So there is a permit in existence and in effect to do pretty much exactly this.
Are you talking about the parking? About that loop driveway there?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll accommodate, being 20 feet wide, it should accommodate the parking and allow for a car to drive through with cars parked. The ordinance, I believe, for parking is 10 and 15 feet. I'm not sure. 10 feet wide and 15 feet long. So we've got parking spots across. This is my little propaganda blurb. We did make a commitment to make Plymouth and this area our home. By the way, this photograph is out our backyard through the fence. We have made so many good friends, and everybody we meet in this town has been top-notch. And we'd like to share it a little bit. This has been a dream of ours for a while, to come up to New Hampshire. I came up here as a, I had a job of a police chief, a local police chief, and I retired last year. I'm bored. Let's go ahead and put a bed and breakfast together. But my wife is born and raised in Miami, so it's been very interesting watching her go through the winters. It's been fun. I grew up in Buffalo, so the winters don't bother me. We've come to really, really love the area. So. And that's my little presentation. Did I make it quick enough, Mr. Lewis?
It was fine. It's perfect. It's not me at the place, no.
I know, I know. The whole, the stuff in the beginning just was.
All the, yeah, yeah. But it was very well put together.
Yeah, very nice. Do you want me to go over a little bit? Would I?
Yeah, why don't you just kind of review the, maybe the proposed modifications to the conditions?
Okay. So the new report I sent you, you can see, I just put it in front of you. The bold is what's new. And what happened was today, this morning, Dick Lewis came by to go look at the folders, and then I realized it was a folder that I didn't look through. And I found that in December 6, 1989, there was a notice of decision that this request to turn it into a tourist home was already granted. I did call our town attorney, and he said the variance is still good. It runs with the land. That variance was approved with four conditions. And Dick Lewis and myself, we went over the conditions, and the first one, we were looking at modifying it. The first one was all parking for guests is to be behind the structure on the rear portion of the property. And as Mr. Hinkle showed, he wants to do it with that circle drive. He already got the permit for the circle drive. And we were thinking that's going to be better anyhow, because the rear, there's topographic problems. I think it slopes off and.
There's a ridge that runs right down the center of the backyard. It's in two levels.
Yeah, it didn't seem to. And the proposal of the circle, you know, you still have the grass. It's still going to look residential, because some houses have a circle drive. It's not so out of character. The second condition was the building must be owner occupied as the owner's principal dwelling, and Mr. Hinkle said that's fine with him. Three, the maximum time limit for transient guest stay will be two weeks. Okay? This was what was originally put in. I did talk to Mr. Hinkle about leaving that, and he said that's fine, because sometimes there's a concern about, you know, getting used to a student staying there, and the student just stays instead of it being a bed and breakfast. So I think that protects us from that, that the person can't stay for longer than two weeks. Four, the guest register must be available to town officials upon request for proof of compliance with condition three. So therefore, if we do sense that somebody is renting it out, we can just look at the register and see when did the person check in and when are they expected to check out. Five is something we were talking about adding, signage. Our ordinance says that signage shall not exceed three square feet for the single-family residential neighborhood, and she'll come, so I just reiterated that it's going to be three square feet, not larger than that, for a freestanding sign. Again, Mr. Hinkle said that was fine with him. Number six, no more than three bedrooms shall be rented out. That's a condition that I just added. I didn't even go over that with Dick Lewis. But the reason why I put that in there is Mr. Hinkle's request is just to rent out three bedrooms. The other bedroom, you know, he and his wife will be in, and there's another bedroom for your children, right? The house sort of is separated, so he's got a distinct way to go up and down, and then the three bedrooms in the front are the ones that he'd be renting out. Anyhow, the reason why we, his proposal's for three, we talked to the fire chief, and he doesn't want it to be more than three, because all of a sudden, I think sprinklers kick in if he goes more than three. So that's what we're thinking, just leave it at three. At the time that he really needs four, then I'll just come back before the board, and we'll discuss it at that point. But for this time, just three bedrooms, it fits in with fire code. And seven, if the tourist home fails to operate for a period of 12 months, then the tourist home use will expire. And the reason I added that is because, just like we had here, that this was granted in 1989, and no one knew it, and it hasn't been used as a tourist home for a number of years. So I talked to the attorney, and he thought it would be a good idea to just put a sunset clause in it. And I didn't go over that with you, but does that sound, if it's not used, if you don't use it for a year, just?
And yes, I agree with that totally, totally. Because that, having been in government for so many years, that protects the town.
Right.
Because needs and things change over the years, especially since 1989. And I think that's only reasonable.
Okay.
Because if we fail at the bed and breakfast, we're just going to move, you know, we're just going to stay there anyways. It's not, this business is not going to be the, our making our living. I'm not so naive as to think that we're going to be able to make a living off of this. But I would like it to pay a good portion of my residence, my living in the residence. And it's just something that my wife has always wanted to do, so, and we've got the venue to do it. And we're going to do that. So if it fails, we'll still work there.
Okay. So I think that that protects us, too, that if, just like it happened here, that no one used it for a number of years, and then we didn't even know it was granted, and then in the meantime, people were asking variances to do different things, like multifamily and all these other things. But if we say it's not operating for a period of 12 months, then it ceases. If after, let's say, two or three years go by, and then you guys decide you want to try it again, or the next owner does, then they would apply for a variance again. But at least we could then look at it anew, look at it afresh. So that's why I recommended that last condition. So, and then I wrote out some findings. Well, I guess we don't need the findings of that.
Yeah, I don't really think so.
Okay. So we don't need any of that. So I guess it would just be, if the zoning board decides to affirm this use variance with the following conditions, to be amended or added as follows. And that would be the decision. You know, you can, you can modify some of these, or add them, or change them, or whatever. But I was looking at it as either affirming and amending the conditions, or where else you want to take care of that.
Miriam, may I have a question about fails to operate for 12 months? Because when I drive through Rummy and I see the bed and breakfasts on the left there, often it says no vacancy, and there's nobody parked there. And so it's, it's running as a bed and breakfast, but they're not renting any rooms out. So does fail to operate, does that mean he takes a sign down, doesn't rent to anybody, or he just?
Well, it'd have to be 12 consecutive months. So if he's got no business for 12 consecutive months, not, you know, he could have a dry spell of two or three or four months, but the 12 consecutive, then I think we're saying it's done. I don't know. Does that?
I don't know what the legal definition of it. I can tell you what my definition of it would be, is folding up and saying, okay, we don't have this business anymore. We are, I am going to create an LLC. Everything is going to be run as a business at that point. As soon as I stop running it as a business, I think our, the clock would start at that point. And if it goes for 12 months without running it as a business, then that's it. I don't know whether we can say that if we don't have any customers for 12 months, even if the business is still open at that point.
Well, what about, what about taxes? Do you, you'd fill out yearly taxes, right, as in declaring it as a business?
Correct.
So maybe if it's not declared.
That's the other, that would be the other clock that might, you might want to look at. It would, I think it would be the board's decision to define at what moment it stops being a business.
I'm used to communities where the local government actually has a business license. So when they fail to get it renewed, and they haven't renewed it for a year, then we know the business is done, because they, but we don't have business's license here. So that's why I was thinking, maybe the federal tax return.
I think that's a difficult one.
Very difficult.
I'm not going to sit here and define what operation is.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
I'm not really, I'm not sure that you can do that.
No, I would, I'd almost just.
Only because of the fact, right now, he has a tourist home. Because that variance, the variance granted in 1989 follows that deed. And it's a deeded right. It has nothing to do with, and I'm not a lawyer, but maybe we ought to have, you know, counsel look at that. But I believe that he's got a tourist home there.
Yeah.
If we make these changes.
Well, wait. I mean, I did talk to counsel, and he said we could put in a sunset clause, but otherwise it does run with the land. So the original one ran with the land. And then I did talk to him about modifying it, too, and he said that's, that's fine, since we've already advertised it as a public hearing and ran the ads, and so we can modify.
Was, just maybe a minor distinction, was the sunset clause, he was thinking about discussing more along the lines of, they don't establish, you know, from, let's say, from this date forward, they fail to establish the bed and breakfast for 14 months versus they establish it and economic crisis hits and nobody visits the town of Plymouth for 13 months.
Yeah. Well, we could do that. Our existing language says, it's on page three, "A variance shall be void if active and substantial building or development has not begun within one year from the date the variance was granted." So, you know, we've already got that kind of language in there. Maybe that's sufficient. I just didn't want, we're, you know, 1989, it was granted, but I don't know the last time it was used as a bed and breakfast, and it was sort of hard to track.
Miriam, if he's, if there's already a variance that goes with the property.
Yeah.
Okay? He's already got permission for the driveway, is that correct? What are we giving here tonight?
Okay. Well, the original variance said that all parking for guests is to be behind the structure on the rear portion of the property.
We're just doing the parking, then?
Yeah.
But he's already got the permission, he's already got the permission for the parking.
Right.
All right?
Right, but, right. So we want to amend that first one to, so that it's not restricted to rear parking.
Okay. I agree with that.
Okay. Then I'm just moving forward the other conditions, and then the one that I add, well, signage, I guess we don't really need, because it's just followed the ordinance. And then just adding to about, no more than three bedrooms shall be rented out. And then we were talking about the period of 12 months, but, I mean, if the board, it was just a suggestion.
Yeah. I mean, I think the, my sense is that the board, there's some discomfort with that, but.
Okay.
I'd just like to say that I think that in defining whether or not he's open for business, the, if the owner was to testify that one day out of the year, he opens the door and says, "I'm open for business," then he's open for business. And if a year goes by and he doesn't unlock that door, and nobody goes in.
Okay. Just a suggestion, if you guys don't feel, you know.
It's pretty simple.
Yeah.
To me. But maybe we could.
So we're talking about deleting number seven as proposed.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if we should delete it or not, but I, but I, I just think it's going to be very difficult to define. I think.
Yeah.
It'll be difficult to define, but.
Again, I guess the concern I always have with variances or special exceptions or whatever is that if, if, when you look at it, you realize this is going to be impossible to enforce, then why put it in? Because, you know, one year down the road, or two years down the road, or one planner or two planners down the road, you know, we say, well, we think he hasn't been open for a year, but, you know, let's go check it out. It's, you know, then it gets, it just is problematic, I feel.
Would you entertain a motion to strike that clause?
Yes, yes.
I move that we strike it.
Here a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of striking number seven as proposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So number seven goes, let me just, we talked about, are we going to keep the signage one? I mean, he has to comply with the ordinance anyway.
Yeah, so it's not, I mean, it's redundant, but.
Yeah. Let me just, what was your thought on signage?
That grassy area that's in, in the circle.
In the loop, yeah.
I was going to put that as close as I can to the, to the street so that it can be seen from the street, a, just a post sign with a plaque.
Yeah, yeah.
That's about it.
Nice wood.
Yeah.
Architecturally correct kind of a thing.
I've already talked to a friend of mine who is newfound graphics and sign that is Manchester. He's going to be doing it for me.
And just be aware that you do need to get a permit for that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I've already looked at the ordinance.
Okay, okay.
You got to, you got to remember, I, my last home for 20 some odd years was in the city of Coral Springs in Florida, and you had to pull a permit to get your house painted, and then you had to look at the approved colors in the book in City Hall. And your landscaping had to be in three tiers, one of them flower, the other two could be green. It was, it was a nightmare.
That's on the agenda for next town meeting, actually.
I have a question.
So this is, this is wonderful.
Did they measure, come out from the town and measure the height of your grass and make sure it was mowed?
They did in Coral Springs, yeah.
No, you're kidding me.
And if it went over a certain height, you got, well, you would get a warning from code enforcement.
Are you kidding?
No.
You're serious?
Yeah. Serious.
I'd like to say that I lived in the house next door in 1989, on the left.
Okay.
And given the character of that neighborhood and how it's changed in the last 30 years, I think this house has kind of stood alone in the fact that it's been difficult to make it into anything else than a single-family residence. And I think that this is a good use for that piece of property, given the restrictions on the size of the land and everything, so.
I would like to, I wish I had enough money to buy up the whole neighborhood.
So do I.
Wish you did, too.
I discussed it with Miriam. I think that the Maynard and the Draper House should be somehow preserved. That's part of the history of Plymouth. Right now, it's all student housing. Those two homes are filled up with students. It's not as bad. It's not as bad as when I moved in three years ago. There would be a group of students, 50 to 100, walking up and down the street. Now we're talking eight or 10 walking up and down the street. Something has changed where it's a little bit easier. I know that Steve Temporino's calls for service, when the previous owners moved out, his calls for service on Pleasant Street dropped by precipitously. I just don't call the cops. There's no sense. But it hasn't been as bad as it was when I first moved in.
Want to call it?
Yes.
We're just going to reaffirm the 1989 variance with the amended condition.
Right. And so all we're looking for amending is actually number one, which talks about parking. Number five, I guess we determined is not necessary, according to the ordinance. So just number one, and then adding number six would actually become number five.
Can I have some... Number six is the three-room one.
Yeah. No more than three bedrooms.
And you did touch on it. If I could add just one thing, and I'm glad you did, because I was thinking, I would like to be able to come back to the board if we ever... There's not a whole lot of room to expand in that house. But if we ever looked like we wanted to expand to another room or two rooms, I would be fully prepared to come into compliance with the upgraded standards of having to put sprinklers in at that point, too. I wouldn't expand unless I did. But I'd like to have the ability to come back before the board at that point and say, hey, look, business is great, and we need a couple of more rooms. We're ready to go sprinkles, sprinklers and everything else, and let the board look at it at that point. If we can just leave that door open a little bit and that's...
So maybe no more than three bedrooms shall be rented out unless brought back before the board. I mean, I just wanted it to be reviewed.
And to be in full compliance with all fire safety standards of the time. I think would be it.
I just wanted to ask you. Is it okay?
Sure. Yeah, please.
Has that carriage barn been converted or modified in any way?
No. Not yet. The first floor carriage portion of it is still a garage. The second floor, I am planning on converting to my residence. That's where I'm going to put a bedroom and a bath. And that's it in there. It hasn't been converted at all, and it's cold in the winter.
And it has a door on both sides, right?
Yeah.
Can I ask, is there still apartment on the third floor?
On the third floor, it's still... It was servants quarters at one time.
Is that what that was?
When I moved in, the third floor plaster was all the horsehair plaster and lathing falling down. I wound up with piles of plaster about this high in each of the three bedrooms that were up there. And we've since drywalled it, put in... Finished the floors off. I put in a spiral staircase up to the fourth floor, and it's a loft up there now. That's going to be my... Also my living area. So that's not what we're running out at this point.
That's great.
And the servants' bell is still on the wall. I've plastered around it.
And the butler's pan, the...
The butler's pantry is still there. All the windows are original, leaded glass, rattling.
Just one other question I had kind of related to parking was on-street parking. I mean, I'm not sure exactly what that street is posted for. And I noticed coming over here tonight, there's a sort of a resident, you know, town of Plymouth resident parking with hours on it. But I mean, I think... I mean, just maybe I'm walking a fine line between sort of zoning board member and neighborhood resident. But, you know, when you come up Keeble Street, you know, you've got to rise a little bit to hit Pleasant. And with the student housing on the left, there's often cars making it very difficult to look up to the left. So sometimes you're going to swing it out wider than maybe you should, and if there's any vehicles parked on the other side of Pleasant, it gets to be a little dangerous.
I don't anticipate any street parking. I'm planning for not having any street parking. If there's overflow, the guests will take over the circle. I've already discussed it with Don Stope, that if I need to park my personal vehicles over in his lot at 10 Pleasant Street, he says he doesn't have a problem with that. And I have a gate between the two properties anyways. I can walk from his parking lot into my driveway. So we anticipated that.
Yeah. Okay.
But I will not have... Allow any guests to park on that street. I've gotten tickets on that street.
Yeah. Would the board be adverse to adding a condition of no on-street parking is allowed?
I wouldn't be adverse to that. That's fine.
Bill, any thoughts on that, or...
But if he said he's already been getting tickets on this street...
Already posted.
What is...
It's not posted. What I got a ticket for was a little technicality. One of the tires was on the sidewalk. I got a ticket for parking on the sidewalk.
I'm just looking at it from a public safety...
I would like to post it. But I'd like to see how you could post it for no parking on the street.
Is there a requirement for parking for a tourist home?
Maybe the whole street needs to be posted.
That's what I'm thinking.
I mean, generally, you have to provide parking, you know? You have to provide parking.
Yeah.
On two promises, across the street.
I think the ordinance says there should be one parking spot per room that you rent.
Okay.
And the circle will accommodate at least four cars. I've got three rooms, so I think I'm...
And you have your garage.
And you got the...
I got the garage.
Yeah. Well, how many does your driveway hold right now? You had like, what, four cars?
I could probably get four cars in there.
Four cars, and then that's without the circle. And then the circle's going to be about three cars?
It's going to be four cars.
Four cars on the circle, too? So you have eight parking spaces?
No. That straight driveway is not going to be... I want to be able to move cars without having to move another car.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But conceivably, I mean, it would hold...
Oh, I could put... Yeah, I could jam a bunch of cars in there, but they wouldn't be very effective. It wouldn't be very comfortable.
Yeah. But that's how we measure parking spaces. We...
I know.
So I'm just saying, we'd count it as eight parking spaces. Okay.
I think the ordinance has one per room.
One space per sleeping room. So you'd be required to have three.
So if you can fit four on the circle, you're...
Three. Well, and then plus, your house is required to have two. So you'd have five that are required. And if you can provide five off-site, then... Okay. Sorry.
Well, actually, there's four in the circle. I still have enough room to put two more cars in the driveway.
Yeah.
Two for your residence, and then three.
Adding a condition, I'm not sure what number it would be.
Yeah, it would be number six. No on-street parking shall be permitted.
Yeah.
We could use that kind of... And then number five, it was going to be no more than three bedrooms shall be rented out unless brought back before the board, and we'll be in full compliance with all applicable codes.
Any other board questions, comments?
Just I do have a question. Ms. Hinkle, you just made a comment that you were going to put a dwelling unit over the garage.
Yes.
Just a question. Question to the board, that this says it will be occupied, that the building will be occupied by the owner. Yeah?
The tourist home will be occupied by the owner.
Right.
Not the garage.
The house and the barn are integrated.
They're...
It's all connected.
They're connected?
Yeah.
They're connected, and they've got doorways and stairways running between the two of them.
Okay.
There they are.
I would say that covers it then.
Yeah. It's all... When you're inside, you don't even realize it's... You're over the garage, so it's all...
Yeah, you walk through... One of the back bedrooms has a doorway going right out in the second floor, the carriage house.
Okay. Very good.
So you were thinking of the attached garage?
I thought it was a attached...
No, it's not. Sorry. Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the board? Comments, questions from the audience?
Well, as a citizen, my name's Frank Miller. As a citizen of the town, I think this is an excellent opportunity to maintain our historical heritage, and I think the use and the character would definitely be a big plus for Plymouth. I hope it gets good use, and I'd like to see it approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one kind of curious mind question. You indicated you sort of talked to the university. They must have like either a website or sheets that they hand out to freshmen or, you know, students. You know, if your parents are visiting, they can say, "Here," kind of a thing. You'll get on that kind of a listing and...
Yeah. Yes, we will. In fact, a notebook... This is the PowerPoint presentation I gave to Maryam. If you want to look through it at your leisure. In the back, there's several letters of recommendation. There's one from Plymouth State.
Okay, good.
Recommending it. And that is exactly what they say they'll be able to do, is they've got alumni coming in.
Yeah.
They have speaking guests. They have visiting professors. They have visiting parents. And they say that they will be glad and happy to direct them our way.
Yeah. Yeah, good. Good. Anything else from the board? Maryam, anything else?
Oh, that was it.
Entertain a motion to sort of affirm the previously granted use variance with the conditions as discussed?
I move.
You're a second?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're all set.
Oh, now I'm scared. Now the work begins.
You're going to be working.
I have been working. I have a honey-do list that is very, very long. Maryam, have you seen it? Part of it, please.